Is that only for the Board of Supervisors?
That's Board of Supervisors.
It's the Board of Supervisors, okay.
Is it their order?
Ask your Board of Supervisors if they're interested in.
Oh.
Did he say they're on order?
The Plan and Commission, Monday, March twenty first, to order. Please stand. Please stand as Mr. Schumaker will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Cruz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For it, thank you for traveling mercies for us all arrive here safely tonight. We ask for your hand and wisdom as we do the business we were tasked to do here tonight. We also pray for your blessings to Buckingham and its citizens. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to our status of corn. We have six, seven, right? If I count correctly, seven of eight, so we do have a corn. Adoption of agenda. Mrs. Nicky, is there any change to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion approved?
Don't move.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved. That brings us to the discussion items. Nicky, you will present those to us, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman. Good evening, everyone. One of our discussion items for this evening is what has been asked of us by the Board of Supervisors. At the January meeting of the Board of Supervisors, they put in a motion to ask the Planning Commission to consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance for the following reason. The county's ordinance requires that the applicant to post signs when an application for a special use permit or a zoning map amendment is made. The county by custom has generally done this. We are a Dillon State and a locality can't do more than is authorized by the state. Courts have said that a county can't require the posting of signs by the applicants. Buckingham has continued the practice in a general way just to try to get notice out there for public. There may not have been a specific adherence to this requirement. That could possibly cause complications and to that end, an amendment could be considered to be added to the zoning ordinance to cover the legal part of the signs. We would still require the signs we posted, but we would add language to the zoning ordinance that provides for noncompliance and that if noncompliance happened, it would not invalidate the actions taken by the Planning Commission or the Board. There are some other options. One would be to take the signs, completely remove those from the requirement within the zoning ordinance, but that would take away an opportunity that allows us to make sure that the public is aware of the applications that are in place. As I mentioned, the Board of Supervisors has asked the Planning Commission to take a look at this and make a consideration. As a commission, we would need to schedule a public hearing and after that public hearing, make a recommendation to the Board. And if the Board still wanted to proceed, they would need to schedule a public hearing and then the Board can take its action as well. So as you can see, in our zoning ordinance, it does require that public hearings, signs should be posted on each parcel involved in the application at least twenty-one days prior to that public hearing. But as I said, we, as a locality, are requiring more than what the state actually requires. So is it possible to get a motion for this consideration this evening?
So Nicky, you're asking us tonight to discuss and then move this forward?
Yes, sir.
As written? Is this what's been already given to the Board of Supervisors?
They are aware and these are the terms on which they've asked the Commission to make a consideration. Consideration for an amendment.
What part of the zoning thing is that on? I don't have a paper.
The zoning ordinance, under your, actually the special use permit application, if you look on the two pages in your handout, Pages one and two, they're discussing that, what is currently there for the twenty-one days and what the proposal for the amendment to the zoning ordinance would.
I don't have my hander.
I'm sorry, I placed one of my slides.
No, I'm just looking in the zoning. Under.
This is what's written.
What's under the zoning? It's not in the zoning word?
It would be on page forty-nine, General Provisions, Sign Placement of Your Zoning Ordinance. Mr. Allen? It actually continues to page fifty because of that General Provisions section.
What is it on?
On page forty-nine and fifty, under General Provisions, and you'll see it says Sign Placement. So I have a printed copy of the zoning ordinance right here. Go back to your. Gotcha.
That's another issue. You probably do it all that quick, and I can't. Had a chance to read it. Well, if we move this forward, it's just for taking the next step to public hearing. If in the interim, if we find something we want to change, we have the ability to change it before it goes to public hearing. So, or at public hearing. Because this is written by our county attorney, so. You have that option, of course. Problem with what we have? I think the way I understood it, talking to Nicky and then reading this again, is that technically, you don't even have to have the signs. I guess it's trying to clear up, I won't say a loophole, but maybe a misunderstanding. Some of the.
Would this be a discussion after the?
No, we, if you got questions, best to do it then and then we'll.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, go ahead and discuss it. I think Daddy may have something because he's working there. As soon as he gets through, we'll open. Talk about it.
But it's.
I think I do agree with, in my opinion, I do agree that the signs are necessary because it is.
Right, yeah.
Helps people notice it.
I would think so.
And this, it still will be the contact by the joint landowners and all. Letter that goes out and all this is just for the sign.
But we can't require more than what the state says and that's the issue.
Right. So this, I guess, and that's clearing it up, I assume with this, because we're not making it mandatory for the signs. We're hoping they'll do the signs, but not to.
It's not a problem, so technically, people can't say, oh, we wouldn't notify, or you didn't put a sign up. Yes.
Wouldn't be held against the county because.
Right.
Daddy, you have time to read over it?
Uh-huh, don't worry, man, go ahead.
Yeah, we just gonna answer questions, whatever, so take your time. I'll open it up for discussions, if I have concerns, questions I want to ask about it.
Go back and read the state one first. This is the one the county got, right?
What were you asking Daddy?
I said, this is the county's one. What is the state one say? You read it, I think, with.
The county's ordinance requires that the applicant post signs when an application for a special use permit is made. County by custom has generally done this. We are a Dillon State and a locality can't do more than is authorized by the state. The courts have said that a county can't require the posting of signs by applicants because it is not required by the state for the applicant to post those signs. But we have, as a county, have done so just in an effort to make sure, you know, it's just one more layer of notice for individuals in addition to the letters that are sent, the posting of information on our website, the advertisements that are run in the Farmville Herald as a local paper.
As well as the letters that go out to the general.
The letters that go out. We generally will put things about our hearing on our website and then two weeks of ads of Farmville Herald as well.
Any other discussion concerns on it? As I say, that when we, if even if we make a motion to move it forward, we still can make adjustments to it at the public hearing.
Okay.
Right, so if there is no other concerns, do I have a motion to move it forward?
I'll make a motion, we move it forward.
I'll second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Close the same sound, okay, that was unanimous. So that'll move to April?
Yes, sir, April twenty-fifth. B, fourth Monday, seven p.m.
Next item is B, Consider Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for Requirement of Formal Site Plans for Special Use Permit App engaged.
Yes, sir. In the past few months, in the past couple of years, the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors has reviewed quite a number of special use permit applications and zoning map amendments or requests for both of those types of applications. During the process, and it has been noted by administration that there are many questions regarding the site plan and the many different aspects for a particular business to operate or lots of those questions have involved landscape and buffering and parking, topography, land disturbance, along with stormwater and ENS. It has also brought up many issues of density with buildings, proposed size of buildings, what would be the usage and purpose of buildings encompassed within the applications. Just in an effort to make sure that we gather efficient information that answers the questions of the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors and our general public who may have questions and neighbors adjacent to these properties. Other localities require more of a formal site plan, some for a minor request, a major request, or there, one locality close to us actually has about an eight-page process that goes with the site plan just to ensure that it covers, you know, every area, roadways, ingress and egress, sidewalks and overall safety. I put this there because if it is something that you wish for the requirement or an amendment to be made to our zoning ordinance and to our application process, if you'd like to task administration, myself, possibly the county administrator and county attorney, to look further into this and move forward with a requirement of a site plan, a formal site plan.
If everyone understand what's being told. My question is, is this for, necessary for the introduction of an application? Is that what, or is this for when you get into the process a little fall?
Well, that brings up another possible change or improvement to our application process in reviewing what other localities require for site plans and making them a bit more formal. It also shows that the special use permit application process and the zoning map amendment process entail a bit more work on the applicant's end. The site plan would come after a series of county meetings and community meetings to ensure that adjacent property owners and anyone else within the area are familiar with what the request may be. If any questions arise during those periods, that would give the potential applicant a chance to review and revise their site plan to ensure maximum safety before it even gets here. But yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this could be something that is not required at introduction if the Planning Commission sees fit, or maybe it would be required by public hearing, or if we don't have it by a certain point, maybe the process would slow down.
Delayed.
Mm-hmm, and delayed to include that information.
I guess, just my opinion, I would hate to see an applicant come in just introductory and have to provide a site plan because it's going to require some expense. And if you're just introducing the case and they get negative feedback from the board, Planning Commission, and, you know, we have a board representative here, then they may want to start over, or maybe withdraw the application. I just hate for someone to spend money that not necessarily need to spend.
Okay.
So my opinion is to maybe improve the application questionnaire.
Okay.
For the introduction and then look at maybe making things tighter as we proceed into the process with the applicant as he goes forward. And that's just my opinion, that's just one. I'm open up to the Commission for discussion. What do you think? Everybody's got an opinion here.
I think it's a good idea to do this because I don't think we getting, I would like to see more from VDOT just from what we've learned in the last month or so. I would like to get some more information from VDOT. I don't think we get enough to add, what Johnny was saying, to add to that.
I would be interested in how other localities do it and how minor and major projects are defined. So if that's something administration could look into so that it was pretty objective or not, you know, so that we could.
I agree. Could you send us a comparison, like we looked at?
Sure.
Or maybe I looked at other counties when we looked at solar panels, what other counties were doing.
I have four on my desk now that I can easily go back and email to each of you tomorrow just to kind of get that thought process going. But is it a consensus that maybe before we move to a formal site plan, that it's more of a, in more in-depth questions and a questionnaire in the application prior to moving?
I think it's a graduated process.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, maybe just improve or add some additional questions that usually come up in the introduction of it. If you already had those, that would be a step in the process already taken care of. So it might expedite it a little bit quicker.
Is it fair to say that you'll task administration with this and come back with? It's fair to say that? To add those questions to the application process?
Right.
And hopefully that will give us a better starting point for an introduction.
Now, as we go forward after that, are they, how intense are you asking for?
That would probably be the result of a minor plan, a major plan, or maybe the nature of the business, which it's defined by commercial and the type of commercial nature of the request. So there are some comparisons that will probably be very handy and beneficial once I get those to you as well. Okay, and then please bring all of your feedback to.
Right.
We could get a general knowledge of what's going on with all the locale.
Now, as you know, every case is introduced, you always have somewhat the standard questions that you always ask anyway. Time, operation, lighting, things, traffic flow, all of that. So expedite it quicker if you already had those answers in the introduction.
I would think that the answer to some of those questions would point you kind of on a flow chart. You know, if you need to skip these other four steps in the process, then, you know, it would point you closer to the finish line.
I also think if it's done to scale, you get a better idea of what's going on too.
Right.
Because I think we've had some hand drawn.
Right, and that's where we need to decide when that, you know, in the process that begins because that's going to require some expense on the applicant, you know, to have somebody draw that up in most cases.
Not just graph paper?
Photograph, you know.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just asking.
You know, site plans can be, that's again, that's how specific you want to get with the site plans because they can be very specific depending on what you ask for. So that's, that would be good to see. And maybe that, it apparently ties back to the, what Nicky was saying, with the decision to do it that way. So I guess right now, we just need to think on this and if we have any comments, we can, now that we have email, we can send those directly to you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything on that before? Thank you, we'll move on to the next, which is Amendment, Consider Amendment to Zoning Ordinance Regarding Home-Based Businesses.
I'm not sure if considering amendment is where we need to be for this part of the agenda yet or not. I wanted to bring up home-based businesses because of the number of requests. You know, we're quite fortunate here in Buckingham because we have had many different business requests. Our citizens are definitely full of an entrepreneurial spirit and I say that because I know that small business is where it all starts and we're happy to support our citizens in their endeavors. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, as the zoning administrator, am enforcing the zoning ordinance correctly but also allowing for that economic development to flow as it should be and preparing the businesses for their business plan. I do want to bring up that in our zoning ordinance on page eighty-two, the definition for a home-based business as we have it currently is a business located on the same property with the owner's primary dwelling, which may be located within the home or in a separate building, may employ those residing on the premises and no more than three persons that do not reside at the property and that does not create noise, vibration, glare, fumes, or electrical interference detectable and sustained to the normal senses of the lot. If the business is not a permitted use, then they must apply for a special use permit. All home-based businesses must comply with any covenants and restrictions that have been recorded with the land. However, home offices which have no outside presence, including but not limited to signs, storage, customers, production, manufacturing, shall be exempt from the requirement of a special use permit. In looking at other counties around us, they, some of the definitions are quite similar. They do state that the applicant must be the owner of the property on which the home application, home occupation is to be located. They do talk about the occupation within the main building should not occupy more than twenty-five percent. They do talk about the occupation within the main building should not occupy more than twenty-five percent or five hundred square feet, whichever is smaller of the floor area within the main building. So even if they're using an accessory building, it cannot be more than twenty-five percent of the dwelling or five hundred, whichever is smaller. It also states that no customers, I think maybe the customers may be part of the question. Anytime there's a retail component with a business, that typically would require a special use permit. Uh, we do have businesses in the area, if you have a trucking business, of course, your trucks are located there and your employees come and drive those out. You have a landscaping business, you're going to park your equipment there and no customers are coming. You're going to meet them on the job site. Um, our contractors in construction would be the same thing. They're located in their home and they don't have customers coming to, um, their home. Um, I have someone who, uh, makes T-shirts and I was looking back through my home-based business, um, applications that I have, no one comes to the site. They only take online orders and they go to the post office and mail those. So they are making something in a small room in their home, so. But when it comes into question whether I'm going to construct or build something in my home or on the premises and I am going to sell it, are we going to look at, am I selling it because it's wholesale? Am I selling it because it's retail because then I'm inviting customers or clients to my home? Brings up a retail aspect. I'm only having a discussion, so I'm going to turn it over to you all to, of course, contribute and and get your thoughts.
Uh, I would guess my first question to you is where's the problem area? Where, where is the problem area that's been, that's involved in some of the application?
Uh, right now I could not put it in one particular district. I know that I have four districts right now that are dealing with, um, some home-based businesses. We've had some conversation, I knew that this work session was coming up, so, um, since this is a bit of a hot topic and like I said, we're able to uncover some, um, forms of economic development, um, through the zoning office. Uh, but I do want to ensure that, you know, the process is happening lawfully and per our ordinance, so. And I want to be fair to the individuals that are operating the business, fair to the county. And by saying fair, fair means doing the right thing. Um, even if it means coming into compliance with the business because I know that our Planning Commissioner on our board has been quite supportive of business endeavors. So this is not an effort to, um, thwart their business, but actually to help that business thrive.
Well, I guess, again, my question though is, I understand what you're saying, but where, where have we ran into in previous applications a problem? It more in where the district it's in, or?
I would say we don't have a, a previous application with a problem. But as I'm looking at furniture construction or patio construction and I may, and I'm going to make it in my home and we don't have any requirements as to what size my building should be or not be and we have not imposed any of those types of restriction. But if I am selling to multiple wholesalers or maybe my neighbors are coming and buying a picnic table.
Think like a place over at Meeks, the last time when they changed their place over next to Farmville. Uh, it started to, you know, we talked a little bit about home business, but they didn't live there. So the definition of it mean she had to go and change it over to a B one. That was a change, that, that was.
That was, uh, that was, um, Jason Meeks on Route fifteen, he had a B one and an A one. The special use permit was granted in the A one portion where the two-story dwelling was located. First of all, it was not a home, um, based business because it was not a primary dwelling. And he was, um, also had a non-retail office, but it did have customers coming to that office. So in order for him to operate and entertain the public, so to speak, and actually operate a business, that did require a special use permit. Now, even if he were at his home, he's inviting customers to that office. I mean, if you were a doctor or a nurse practitioner, those are some of the other questions, um, that have been raised as well. Now I have, I'm most likely going to have a sign, someone knows that I'm operating there and I am, I'm a nurse practitioner, maybe I have three other people that are there. Now I have customers coming. Now, of course, these are all, um, services that, that we can use, but I have customers coming and going to this office. It is now a business office space.
So my question would start, I guess, legally. I know the code of Virginia says that we can't prevent someone from running a home-based business. Uh, we can have ordinances that define the time and manner and signs and duration. So what restrictions are we allowed or what, what sort of updates do you think our ordinance needs?
For this, for the zoning ordinance, um, yes, you can operate a business, but it's just like if you build a home. If it's not in compliance with the zoning ordinance or the, the building, um, code of Virginia, then it's not something that is in compliance. Um, I'm, guess I'm asking you all this evening, al- along with me to consider any other businesses that may not have been ish- mentioned, such as your contractor, your landscaper, your, your truck driver, um, even your logger. You know, they're parking trucks there and the guys are coming and driving those away. There's not a customer visiting, visiting that site. If a potential client, um, or a customer visits that site, is that what changes it to retail? Or it has a component that may require a special use permit? Because in our zoning ordinance, if we go back to the medical portion of that, we're saying that that is authorized in a B one district. It's not authorized in A one, but of course, an applicant can state their case and make an application for a zoning text amendment to do so. It's not something that's permitted by right. So, you know, I really want to take a look at this home-based business because some potential applicants have said, well, you know what, I'm, I am making furniture in, um, the barn on my building. I don't sell to the public, but it's all wholesale. Well, wholesale comes in and they get them, I, they're still my client. They're a wholesaler, I don't need to see all twenty people that they're going to sell to, but I do see that particular person. Is that a home-based business?
So we need more triggers then?
The zoning ordinance states that any, um, business that's not a permitted use by right in that particular district has to apply for a special use permit. So I'm asking you all to help guide me the best that you can, um, to a true definition of what a home-based business is. Am I missing it? Do I, do I get to make what I want on my property and sell it to my friends and neighbors or any other client? Because if it's a home-based business and, and clients are coming there and we're saying that it fits these parameters, there's no V dot telling me that it's safe. I know that I have a V dot entrance because I live there and it's residential and that's approved, but I'm inviting the public in. The building that I'm operating in, if they come in and pick out that picnic table, has it been brought to code by what, um, the building code of Virginia entails? I mean, I'm only, I'm asking for you all to help me with the definition, and this may some- be something that may be ongoing and we won't, you know, solve all the problems of home-based business tonight.
A lawn mower repair man, he's going to have people that are dropping them off and picking them up.
A small engine repair shop would be something that would require. It's really no different than a car garage and that would require a special use permit.
You say you have access to some other county information that have those?
I do, yes, sir, and I can send that, um, these three counties. Um, and I chose counties very close to us, Fluvanna, Appomattox, Prince Edward, Amherst, um, Hanover, which isn't as close to us, but they, um, do have quite a number of cases similar to things that we have. So I'm happy to send that to you and once again, read through it, think about it much as you possibly can, think about it too much and send me, um, that feedback. It would be greatly appreciated and once again, um, staff will take those recommendations and, um, most likely another discussion on that.
I think we're, I've agreed with you, we don't want to penalize somebody accidentally by just trying to run a home business, but I do understand what your concerns are too. We have the potential for problems the way we're at right now.
Correct.
Commissioners have anything they want to add to this at this time? Have homework to do.
You do, and before I turn everyone loose, um, I do want to bring up another project that is on the cusp. It was, uh, brought into open session by our Board of Supervisors at their most recent March meeting and that is the potential sale of the industrial park, um, about a one hundred and fourteen acres for the sale of approximately six thousand dollars an acre. Our county, uh, administrator and county attorney, uh, were designated by the board to help execute a sales contract and of course, a, a public hearing would be forthcoming. Um, within this, um, development within the industrial park, um, it would be approximately a hundred and twenty-four townhomes with retail components. So that would give additional retail office space, um, in that particular area. And then twenty-three single-family standalone homes as well with a recreation center, community pool. Um, and in one of the corridors in the, um, back section of, uh, that industrial park, there would be a few lots available for light industrial, um, manufacturing, um, open for sale or rent businesses as well. So I did want to bring that out to you, um, for any discussion or if you had, need more information, please contact me. I'll be glad to send you some more, uh, regarding that development.
Is that a situation where the county would have been required to advertise?
It, right, the sales contract, should that be, uh, negotiated, there would be a public hearing for the sale of?
Well, what I'm saying is, wouldn't it, I would have thought that it would have been, happened to been advertised, opened up to the public before you went into a contract.
Was it opened up to the public when the, uh, sale of the three acres to the, um, hotel was initially?
I know the individual ones not, but you're talking about large, I'm just asking.
I, I wasn't here for that original hearing, so it could have addressed, um, the industrial park itself, not just the three and a half acres, but that it was open for negotiation. Alan, there's on the board, maybe he's.
Oh, it's just a question, I'm just, just curious.
That's probably better suited for our county attorney.
I don't think he's, he's out here either.
He may be in the back room.
It's, it's, I was, I'm just more, don't worry about it, it's, it's fine. I was just asking just for information, that's all.
If they come before public hearing, therefore it's anything. Right now, only, only motion's been made is to let them, uh, work, work on it.
We do not have a sales contract in place.
Oh, all right.
Oh, no, the county administrator's been appointed to help negotiate that.
All right, any other? Yes, Joyce?
Were we going to talk about disposal of our records, of our packets?
The packets that you received, the paper packets?
Yes.
You can bring them in if you'd like, you can, they're all public information. There's nothing in them, um, should they? They're open for public consumption, there's nothing in your packet that, um, wouldn't be available for the public. So you could choose to dispose them yourself or with, as with any other document that you have or documentation that you have, you're welcome to bring them here.
Okay.
Better pile them if you want.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? All right, that brings us to Nikki, you've completed then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it brings us to Commissioner Matters and Concerns. Anybody thing they want to voice at this time?
All this stuff we want to bring back and talk about again in another work session? Are you going to talk about it more on our?
I have another work session April twenty-first, so my thought was that, not April twenty-first, April eighteenth. Um, so we could come back on that date. The dates are set in our calendar, they're all tentative and, um, there, so April eighteenth would be your next work session at seven P M.
Work each month. That'll give you opportunity to get your information together, give you enough time. Any other? Ian, done to have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second. No discussion, I'm sure, all in favor, raise your right hand, we are adjourned, thank you.